I rise for two motions.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I request a second committee of conference on HB 1056, the Wellness and Opportunity Commission established.
Delegate Herring requests a second conference committee on HB 1056 on page, who knows?[25.34][25.34](laughter)
I can look it up, Madam Speaker. It's going to take a while.
Thirty-nine. That's great, Delegate Sullivan. Page 39. On page 39. All those in favor shall say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The clerk will, yeah, the motion is agreed to. The clerk will assign a second conference committee on HB 1056, page 39. Delegate Herring, is there another motion?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I request a second committee of conference on HB 972, the Maryland Decriminalization Bill.
Delegate Herring requests a second conference committee on HB 972. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the second conference committee will be assigned to HB 972.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Herring. Madam Clerk.
Senate Bill Number 1096 was introduced by unanimous consent in the Senate, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.1, 3660 of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 56, 585.1:11 relating to electric utilities, electric school bus projects. This constitutes its, the bill has been referred to Committee on Labor and Commerce, and this constitutes its first reading. Returning to the calendar, page 62 of the calendar, Conference Committee on, Conference Committee Report on Senate Bill 272.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is the Senate cognate of my HB 1552. It is the tethering bill. The Senate did not want to allow localities to impose stricter standards than we provided in this bill. We took that out to get a few more votes over there. I hope it might even get a few more votes over here. I urge passage of the bill.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 54, nays 41, abstentions zero.
Ayes 54, nays 41, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Page 65 of the calendar, Conference Committee Report on Senate Bill 384.
Delegate from Fairfax. Delegate Sickles.
Madam Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate Sickles, you have the floor.
It's not Senate Bill 272, so what is the bill? Okay. Thank you. I wanted to do my bill first because it's the same as this, but I know my number. Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill is the mobile sports betting bill, and there are several changes. The one that I think would most interest people here is that when we passed this bill, we had a ban on betting on Virginia teams, like University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, et cetera. And we had banned proposition bets, in-game bets, bets on people for all college sports. That remains in the, in this conference report. No proposition bets, as they call them, are in the bill. The tax rate that came out of here was 20%. Theirs was 15%. The conference report has 17.5%. The professional leagues, and if there's a question about, we gave more power to leagues. This is kind of related to the ability to ban sports betting at, in the college level. There's a, the definition of, and this may have been the same in the earlier version, but the definition of sports governing body means an organization headquartered in the United States that prescribes rules and forces codes of conduct with respect to professional sports or college sports events and participates, participants therein. Sports governing body includes the designee of the sports governing body. Now, why that is meaningful, that definition, is that later in the bill, on line 1019, a permit holder, nope, sorry, that's not the right one.
The House will be at ease.
No, I'm good.[357.12][357.12](laughter) Okay. Does the Senate bill go by temporarily?
All those in favor of SB 384 going by temporarily shall say aye. Those opposed, SB 384 goes by temporarily. The clerk shall continue with the calendar.
Going to page 14 of the calendar, Joint Conference Committee Report on House Bill 4.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Knight, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 4 is the casino bill. This had 10 conferees appointed to it. The 10 conferees have met back and forth and have agreed and signed the conference report. There's a fair amount of data in this bill. I'm going to highlight the differences. One, they wanted to go from five to seven members of the lottery board, and one of them being a law enforcement officer, the other one being a certified public accountant. That was done. There are about 12 technical adjustments in here asked by the lottery board that are pretty technical. They go to FOIA exemptions and such. Bill also clarifies that the board's an entity that'll conduct the investigations of applicants and underend angels in conjunction with accredited federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies. Another stipulation provides for the Department of Lottery to assist any eligible host city upon request. We have in here for minority participation, includes as a factor for the eligible host city to consider when selecting a preferred casino gaming operator. The proposer status as a minority-owned business, as defined in Virginia Code, must be considered. Provides that the City of Richmond may provide preferred consideration to a Virginia Indian tribe. We have certification for referendum. Says it reworks the precertification process contained in both bills to be a preliminary view of the financial status and ability of a preferred casino gaming operator for the purpose of certifying that a host city may proceed to referendum. We raised the minimum investment for an applicant from 250 million to 300 million now. Clarifies that the non-refundable license fee, which we originally had at 1 million, then we moved to 5 million, is now 15 million upon issuance of a license, and also applies to any subsequent transfer of a license. Also clarifies the $50,000 application fee, which must be paid for each principal, and a principal is someone that has 5% or more of a licensee. It also says if it costs more than $50,000 to go somewhere to investigate someone, they may pay, they must pay the overage. It also increases the amount of time for the department to conduct background check from 90 days to 12 months. In the temporary gaming provision, it reworks this that makes, in addition to everything that's already listed in the bill, a performance bond that is posted in an amount acceptable to the board. This will be substantial. Clarifies that a casino gaming operator license shall be valid for a period of 10 years from its date of issuance. Provides for the minimum and maximum wagers on games to be set by the lottery department. The tax rate, we have gone to now a single tier that has a $300 million minimum investment to be able to be an operating casino. On the first $200 million of adjusted gross receipts, a rate of 18%. On the adjusted gross receipts that exceed 200 million but do not exceed 400 million, a rate of 23%. On any gross receipts of an operator that exceed 400 million, a rate of 30%. Now, to these same localities, that is the gross rate that is paid. Of that, there's a 6% to the locality on the first 200. It's a 7% rate on the next 200 to 400. There's an 8% rate, anything that exceeds 400. Sports betting. The language in this bill that is, says the language includes a prohibition on wagering on any athletic event in which at least one participant is a team of a Virginia public or private institution of higher education. No college betting in this sports betting component tethered to a casino. It revises the enactment clause requiring the referendum to be held on November 3rd, 2020, but this excludes the City of Richmond from this requirement. If the City of Richmond wants to go, November 3rd of 2020, they can. If they want to go at a later date, that is their option. Historical horse racing. This bill allows 2,000 new historical horse racing machines. It allows up to 1,650 in a large market of new HHR machines. These new machines will be taxed at a 20% tax rate. Also, no more than 40% of these historical horse racing machines are able to be manufactured by any more than a single manufacturer, so if a single manufacturer cannot have an exclusive, he can put no more than 40% in an operation. For every 100 new historical horse racing machines allocated, one new day of horse racing will be applied for. Madam Speaker, this bill's been an extremely collaborative effort with many, many people involved. They know who they are, and I would like to thank them because they have offered a tremendous amount of input. I am not aware of any substantive input they've offered that is not included in this bill. Madam Speaker, I move the House approve House Bill 4 Conference Report.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, the gentleman, well, the delegate from Virginia Beach, yield for a question.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
The delegate will yield.
Madam Speaker, I'd ask the delegate, do you know if the Senate has taken action on their version of this conference report yet or not? And the reason for asking, Madam Speaker, is because we've got a number of conference reports that we've spent a long time discussing and debating and then voting on, only to have those reports fail in the other body. Before we get too into a big discussion about this, if you know whether or not this is actually already passed the other body or not, it'd be good to know that before we get into this debate.
Madam Speaker, I do not know that. I know that I had both conference reports signed at exactly the same time. I gave the five for Senate Bill 4, and at the same time, Senate Bill 36 to the House. I immediately went down to the Senate, gave it to a senator there, so, Madam Speaker, I do not have any knowledge.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I have a motion.
Delegate Simon, your motion.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to speak to the motion. Move that this bill go by temporarily?
All those in favor of HB 4 going by temporarily shall say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, HB 4 goes by temporarily. The clerk shall continue with the calendar.
Page 16 of the calendar, Conference Committee Report on House Bill 36.
The delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 36 comes back to us with a completed conference report that accepts the Senate amendments that largely change now that we are tailoring how we are going to define student journalists, media advisers, and media to only colleges and universities, that we have switched any reference to schools to institutions at the suggestion of the Senate. One Senate amendment that was suggested by Senator Peterson did not make it into the final conference report because it was trying to mandate that universities enforce censorship by individuals that they might not have control over, and the Student Press Law Center, in consultation with other stakeholders, thought that that would be too unwieldy. So, all that being said, I hope it would be the pleasure of the House to accept the conference report for House Bill 36.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 79, nays 16, abstentions zero.
Ayes 79, nays 16, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Page 24, Conference Committee Report on House Bill 540.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, this is back, the bill is the way that the House, the bill left the House, and the clause has been removed, so I ask that the House accept the conference report.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 95, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 95, nays zero, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Page 25 of the calendar, Conference Report on House Bill 542.
The delegate from Prince William, actually, the delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I would ask the House to accept the conference report, which again removes the clause.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 59, nays 39, abstentions zero.
Ayes 59, nays 39, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Page 26 of the calendar, Conference Report on House Bill 582.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 582, it's in reference to collective bargaining. I will move that we take the conference report, and I will explain the change, the results of the conference report.
Delegate Guzman, you have the floor.
This new bill on collective bargaining, our conference report, talks about an opting option for any county, city, town, or local school board to allow their employees to engage in collective bargaining. When a resolution is presented, the governing body will have 120 days to act in the resolution. And in lines 33 and 34, it talks about including employees who work for the school board. So, I know I've been asked this question a couple of times, so it states there, and it's also excluding constitutional officers, and I move we pass the conference report.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 53, nays 46, abstentions zero.
Ayes 53, nays 46, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Report on House Bill 582. Sorry. Page 28, Conference Report on House Bill 714.
The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Reed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to House Bill 714, this is the Virginia Energy Plan, and this is the same as Senate Bill 94, so when we come to that later, we'll be able to do that a little bit more quickly. This codifies Executive Order 43 and also creates kind of overarching objectives for Virginia Energy Plan. This now is in the form that left the House, so the Senate has accepted our version of the bill, which passed in early February by '55 to '45. There were three changes that we made during the conference report. One, or two of those were to actually add additional groups to the stakeholder groups, so we're adding forestry to forestry and agriculture, and we're also adding natural gas to natural gas and electric utilities. So, those are now members of the stakeholder groups that will be involved with this. The other thing that we did is to align this to some of the other energy plans that are already making their way through, is we changed the date from 2050 to 2045 for achieving 100% net zero carbon. So, I would move that we accept the conference report.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 53, nays 46, abstentions zero.
Ayes 53, nays 46, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Page 30, Conference Report on House Bill 785.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 785 is one of two bills that, the Senate version carried by Senator Emmett Hanger. This blends the two versions that have to do with granting equal taxing authority to counties as the cities have had since the 1930s to relieve the real estate tax. The blend between the two bills, from the House bill, we have the effective date starting this July, except when it comes to tobacco products, and we also have any, anything in excess on the transient occupancy tax of 5% may be used for general funds, but it does not in any way disturb the current use of transient occupancy tax. From the Senate side, we will have caps on the meals tax of 6%, and we will have caps on amusements at 10%, which is the highest that a city currently has. And there will also be a cap on tobacco products for counties at 40 cents, which is the level that is currently allowed for Arlington and Fairfax County, but that 40 cents a pack may be used by any county. I hope it'll be the pleasure of the body to accept this conference report.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 60, nays 36, abstentions one.
Ayes 60, nays 36, abstentions one. The conference report is agreed to.
Page 32, Conference Report on House Bill 868.
Reconsidered the vote.
All those in favor of Delegate Herring's motion to reconsider.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
I'm sorry, parliamentary inquiry or something like that. Could the delegate orient us to the page number?
Yes, I'm trying to find it right now. I apologize.
Page 30.
I thought, I'm looking on the screen.[1799.32]
I thought, I'm looking on the screen. Page 30.
HB 785 on page 30.
Delegate Watts, Bill, that we just voted on.
All those in favor of Delegate Herring's motion to reconsider HB 785 on page 30 shall say aye. Those opposed, we will reconsider HB 785 on page 30. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I noticed that in the conference report, the way it's drafted, it says it applies to all but two localities. Does that make this special legislation requiring a 67-member vote?
It does, Delegate Simon.
Thank you, Madam.
Delegate Simon. Okay. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As I understand it, we are about to vote on reconsideration. This issue was only brought to my attention, if I may explain the reason why, in this one provision, and this has never happened in any of the other versions, this one provision, you name two localities, York and, I don't have it in front of me. This had to do with the taxing authority given for the historic triangle, where these two localities were barred from any transportation occupancy tax because of the agreement that was reached, and I believe it was a sales tax arrangement for the historic triangle about two years ago. So to honor that arrangement of two years ago, that's why the Senate version has to name those two localities by name. And again, it has never been raised before, but I only plead with you to treat this then as the significant policy change that has, changes almost a century of limitations on counties and treats all localities more equal, although again, I would emphasize there are specific caps on counties that were not on the versions that were before the House prior.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk shall destroy the roll. Delegate from Alamooral, Delegate Bell.
Have we, in fact, there was a motion made to rehear. Has that motion to rehear been?
Yes, it was reconsidered.
Thank you.
We're now in voting posture.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasul.
Madam Speaker, can this go by temporarily?
The clerk, the clerk shall.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
The vote has been called for. That is not a timely request or motion.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate Rasul.
I believe until you have closed the roll, that it is in order.
The clerk shall destroy the roll. Delegate Rasul.
Madam Speaker, I have a motion.
Yes, Delegate Rasul.
Can HB 785 go by temporarily?
All those in favor of HB 785 going by temporarily shall say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, HB 785 goes by temporarily. The clerk shall continue with the calendar.
Page 32 of the calendar, Conference Committee Report on House Bill 868.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, I remind you all again, House Bill 868 is my Freedom Bill, which allows all energy customers to shop for a 100% renewable project. I thought we might be able to get peace in the valley in a conference report, but we're going to try and accept the Senate's amendment to have a reenactment clause so that the stakeholders might have a little bit more time and work on an amendment that the governor might send down at reconvene. So I'd ask the body to accept the Senate and conference report version.
Shall the conference report be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Is 56, nays 41, abstentions zero.
Is 56, nays 41, abstentions zero. The conference report is agreed to.
Page 35 of the calendar, Conference Committee Report on House Bill 896.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. This is back on the better House version of this conference report. I was talking about the section that had, that defined a sports governing body, and so on line 1081, this is why that's meaningful. A sports governing body may notify the department that it desires to restrict, limit, or prohibit sports betting on its sporting events by providing notice in accordance with requirements prescribed by the director, meaning the director of the lottery. A sports governing body may also request to restrict the types of bets that may be offered. So that is an approach that could really limit what sports leagues and colleges might want to do. Continuing down the differences in the House-passed bill and the conference report, there is a substantial preferred consideration for a somewhat temporary license for the Redskins. That's on line 890 to 898. It's only temporary, the preference is only temporary because we want to see what they're going to do with their future investment plans. And there's also a preference for DC United/Washington Spirit. Washington Spirit is the women's soccer team that plays at the highest professional level. That's on line 899 through 907. The DC United and their second, their USL team, the Loudoun United, would have to move their corporate headquarters to Virginia in order to get this preference. If they didn't do that, they could apply just like anybody else. And then also, kind of related to the casino bill that's pending, there is a substantial preferred consideration for an operator that reaches the referendum stage in the casino process so that they can have a, since there are going to be operators here with no investment in Virginia, no stake in this, this would give them a chance to have a mobile app prior to the actual construction of the brick and mortar. There are, there's language in here to allow for, as a consideration in giving, awarding licenses, a factor for consideration of minority investors. That was not in the House bill. There are further protections against prohibited conduct that are located on lines 1125 through 1140. There's the continued prohibition on the use of biometric data. There are some technical changes on the fees, and the I lottery, which was in this bill one time, is not included since HB 1383 has already passed. Both Houses are awaiting the governor's signature. That was, that was taken out of this bill. So those are the changes, and I would move passage of the conference report.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Boliva, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker and ladies and gentlemen of the House, I supported the version of this bill that came out of this body, but I rise to express concerns over what came out of this conference. And specifically, what Delegate Sickles went ahead and mentioned is that what we are now doing is legalizing wagering on college sports teams, and specifically, our own college students. And so I want you to think about this, is that these are not professional athletes. These are our athlete-scholars. These are students. These are 18, 19, 20-year-olds. I want to read to my colleagues a letter that was sent by our colleges and universities asking to be exempt college sports. And so this was sent out last September, and I know we get a lot of emails with a lot of information, and so I guarantee you this was something that was missed by the vast majority of us. But I think it's important for you to understand why our college/university presidents feel so strongly about this. One of our primary functions as educators is the protection of student health and safety. This important obligation takes many forms, including proactive steps to educate our students and encourage responsible behavior. The legalization of gambling on college athletics would make pursuit of this goal more difficult and have a corrosive and detrimental impact on student athletes and the general student body alike. Unlike professional athletes, student athletes are part of a broader university community. Student athletes are subject to intensive peer and community pressure, given the widespread interest in college sports and the frequency and interaction they have within our close-knit communities. If athletic performance leads directly to profit or loss, our athletes will face enormous pressure from a variety of sources. Social media exacerbates this pressure, and it creates a direct tool for communications with student athletes. Illegal gambling on college sports already contributes to the pressure felt by our student athletes. Legalized gambling on those events will significantly heighten the pressure and jeopardize their mental health. And one more. In addition to these practical dangers, we believe that gambling is inconsistent with the values of amateurism reflected in college sports and athletics. The vast majority of our athletes are prospective, on our respective campuses participate in athletics purely for the love of the game, with little thought of playing professionally. They endure physical and emotional challenges of competition and balance that commitment with their academic obligations. Their rewards are pride, camaraderie, and a satisfaction that comes with the pursuit of excellence. Allowing competition to be monetarized through gambling demeans the important value of amateurism and dilutes the virtue of these student athletes' efforts. This is a letter that was signed by 22 of our presidents and chancellors of our colleges and universities. I would like to vote for a sports betting bill this year. I think this is an important bill. I think a lot of work has gone into this bill, and I think we can. But I'd like to send a signal to our Senate that we need to stick by our House position and ensure that we do not bet on our in-state colleges and universities. And for that reason, I hope that we will defeat this measure, and then we will have a second committee of conference. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Kriesak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Question for the delegate from Franconia.
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Fairfax.
Franconia is a wonderful place. It's a beautiful place, right along I-95.
Will the delegate yield? Will the delegate from Franconia?
I yield.
Delegate yields.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. How does this reconcile with the language that we have in HB 4 that prohibits sports betting in Virginia, on Virginia teams?
Well, it would be a separate policy for a mobile app. And if the governor wanted to align the two, when he gets it, he could do that. But if the other bill passes, and this bill passes, voting on, excuse me, betting on Virginia sports teams in a brick and mortar would be illegal, but it would still be legal, only on the game itself, no proposition bets in the mobile app bill.
Delegate Kriesak.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, thank you.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the conference report.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, as a member of the conference report and somebody who's signed on to this conference, I encourage you all to vote for this conference report. I understand some of the concerns raised by my colleague, the fellow delegate from Fairfax. And as he read in his report, illegal gambling already contributes to all the problems identified in that letter. And in fact, I think in a lot of ways, illegal gambling and the element that it attracts is probably more damaging than bringing this into a legal, regulated, state-sponsored setting. In fact, the whole reason, well, for me, the reason I'm a supporter of legalizing sports betting in Virginia, for some people it may be about the revenue, for me, it's about taking what's happening out in the gray market and the black market and bringing it into the light so that we can regulate it, we can see it, we can protect people with regulations and rules and transparency, we can create apps that people will use. And if you continue to carve out huge swaths of the market from the legal product, you're not going to accomplish what you're trying to do with this at all. People are going to keep using the app that they already have on their phone, where they're doing it out of the Bahamas, that allows them to bet on all things they want to bet on, and we're not going to get the revenue, we're not going to get the regulation, we're not going to get the consumer protections that we're looking for. This is a compromise. It only allows folks to bet on the outcome of the final game, so it doesn't allow you to vote on athletes themselves and their specific performance and do things that are called prop bets. I think this is a good compromise that still adheres to our basic premise of the House bill, gets us something that we can get through the Senate, and also gets us into a legal market, which is where we want folks to be so that they'll use these products safely and responsibly, have things like self-exclusion and so forth. And then finally, as to this issue of amateurism, I got to tell you, I don't have a lot of sympathy for the position of the athletic, all the presidents who have these multi-million-dollar businesses that they run on our college campuses, where they sell and exploit these athletes for profit every day, sell their jerseys. Talk about the highlight, the fact that they're put on a pedestal and subject to all that pressure, that pressure comes from the universities monetizing their very existence and their images and likenesses, although some university presidents came and killed my bill this year to allow us to compensate those folks. I would please ask you to vote yes for this bill, HB 896, for the conference report.
The delegate from Fairfax and Franconia, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think the other delegate from Fairfax, the one that just spoke, was right on the money on this. I was going to, I was going to mention the fact that getting lectured by the college presidents about exploiting athletes is really beyond the pale. I mean, these people are out there, you know, getting, they're making millions and millions of dollars off these athletes now, and I'm so glad they're worried about them. But remember, I talked about the provision in this bill that allows a sports governing body to ban the whole thing. So that's in there. If the SEC, if the ACC decide that they don't want their league to be subject to, or have their folks banned from the Virginia app, not the illegal app, not the Maryland app or the North Carolina app, the Tennessee app, they have the ability to do so. So I urge the passage of the conference report.
The delegate from Fairfax, the other Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
With the gentleman from Franconia, rise for a question. And I've been waiting for this for so long.
I know.
Will the delegate yield?
I'm not going to look at him.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I asked the gentleman, would he not agree, though, when you take a look at line 1089, that he had cited that a college or university could ask for an exemption, that number one, a college sports organization, that isn't a college or university, so they'd have to get permission from the governing body that makes all those rules in order for this to happen. But the other one is that this isn't a college or university requesting this, and that the director or the state would say, okay, we'll do it. In fact, what it does is request, or requires, that the requister has to show with a burden of proof on them that there is a significant and unreasonable integrity risk to the game. And so this is not something that would be automatic. Is that correct, Delegate Sickles?
No, I think that the director should, no, it's correct. I just think that the director is capable of making these decisions, and they would have to ensure that. So if all the presidents are as unified as they say in that letter, it should be, you know, accepted across the league, that if they are thinking like Virginia's educators, that they shouldn't have a problem banning the, betting on their league. I think the gentleman.
Thank you. The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Madam Speaker, will Delegate Sickles yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
A you? Delegate from Franconia. Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate, so is this proposal that I think Delegate Boliva is arguing against, would that be a situation in which if I want to bet on my Virginia Cavaliers in the national championship game like last year, that he would say, I can't support my alma mater's team if I want to try to make some money on their success?
Will the delegate yield?
I would say the gentleman, unfortunately, he is correct. I would say the gentleman also, he would not be allowed to bet on whether the star player is going to hit a three-pointer with five seconds left in the game. He would not be able to do that.
Delegate from Norfolk.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Jones, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker and members of the House, all I would say is that, as a proud alum of one of our great state universities, I would love the opportunity to support them if they are doing well in sports events and maybe make some money on my own. I would encourage everybody to vote yes on this bill this afternoon.
The delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Kriesak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaker's in the bill.
Delegate Kriesak, you have the floor.
Thank you. So my concern is that we're enshrining in our code this allowing our amateur sports here in Virginia to be bet on. These are, these are kids who are not being paid, and it's too, there's too many problems can arise, and I don't need to go into them all, you know what those are. And secondly, as I mentioned in my question to the delegate from Franconia, which is right next to Mount Vernon. next to Mount Vernon, great community, is that, is the inconsistency between this and the brick and mortar bills that we're about to pass later today, hopefully. And I think that, I think that we should, I hope, and if this does pass, perhaps the governor will make changes and follow our direction in the brick and mortar and HB 4. But I'm very concerned about this, but I think you've worked hard on the bill, and I recognize that, but I'm going to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Shall the conference, I'm sorry, the delegate from Powhatan, Delegate Ware.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the gentleman from Franconia rise for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, happy to rise. I thought he was going to ask what the rest of the Fairfax delegation thought.
Delegate Ware.
Madam Speaker, I did not know that the gentleman from Franconia could also read minds. But that is, in fact, what I was going to ask. Has the delegation from Fairfax come to a conclusion on this question?
Well, thank you for the question. We haven't had a meeting lately, Madam Speaker. Okay?
No, I support the delegate.
Okay, I lost one. I lost a vote here. All right.
Delegate Plumb and Delegate.
I vote no. This is not going well.
Delegate Sickles.
I got Keem. I got Keem, okay.
I thank the gentleman.
Thank you.
The delegate from Manassas, Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kriesak, rise for a question? I have to specify, there's so many of them.
Will the delegate rise? Yield.
Yeah, I do, Madam Speaker.
The delegate yields. Delegate Carter.
Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate, we've heard from the delegate from Fairfax, and 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 the delegate from Fairfax, a lot of things about this bill, but I have a question about the inconsistency that he brought up. Is it, is it correct to say that if these two bills were to continue as they currently are, that someone could not place a sports bet on a Virginia team in a brick and mortar, with a brick and mortar casino, but they could place that order on their phone in that casino?
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kriesak.
That's a good question, and I think that's, Madam Speaker, that's answering the question. I think that's why we need this clarity, and not, and we should vote no on this and stick to what we've got in HB 4.
Shall the conference report be agreed to?
Ayes 40, nays 56, abstentions zero.
Ayes 40, nays 56, abstentions zero. The conference report is rejected. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't know if it's a motion or a quest, but I would ask that we have a second committee of conference for House Bill 896.
All those in favor of Delegate Boliva's motion to have a second conference on HB 896 shall say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we will get another, we will reconstitute a committee for HB 896. Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, I rise for two motions.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I asked for a second committee of conference on HB 785.
On page?
On page, I'm looking for it. Sorry. Page 30.
Page.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Point of order.
Delegate Gilbert, you have the floor.
Aren't we in a posture that this was reconsidered, albeit by someone who was not on the prevailing side?
And we need, I believe it, where we are right now is I believe we need to vote on that bill first. I believe it was asked, we voted on the motion to reconsider it. Delegate, Delegate Herring.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I can't make that motion.
Madam Speaker, parlaying our agree.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, is it necessary for a conference report to fail by a recorded vote before asking for a second committee of conference, or are we able to ask for a second committee of conference, ask the Senate to issue a request for a second committee of conference if we realize that we've had an impasse on a bill, for instance?
That is a good question. I'll be right back. House will be at ease. We have done that before, we can do that, so the delegate's motion is in proper form, and the motion remains. Shall we reconstitute a conference committee for, I believe, was it seven, eight, HB 785? On page 30, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, we will move forward with reconstitute a conference committee. Delegate Herring, did you have another motion?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I believe that we stand in recess until 6:10, and if I could speak to that motion.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the House caucus could go downstairs to caucus very briefly after we stand in recess.
All those in favor of recessing until, what's the time, six? What's the time?
6:10.
Until 6:10 shall say aye. Those opposed, the House stands in recess until 6:10.